Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. Public comment is open. I'm not seeing anybody on Zoom. Anybody in council chambers wishes to make a comment? Now's the time. Go ahead and approach the tables, state your name and city of residence for the record. Don't need to do address.
That's fine. Adrian Kestner, Troutdale resident. I wanted to possibly offer a suggestion, given the success of the First Friday event and the arts festival that followed. I went down for both of those fantastic events, lots and lots and lots of people. My suggestion, after seeing quite a lot of people for First Friday in particular, walking a significant distance after trying to parallel park on Buxton, it strikes me that the signage pointing to the currently available parking in the field could have been quite a bit more prominent. Because I saw a lot of people hunting around for parking when there was a lot of parking available there. So I don't know if there's anything that we can do to possibly increase the prominence of that signage or have people directing traffic towards that field, at least as long as we have available for parking. That might be helpful.
All right. Thanks, sir. Anybody else? The table is yours.
Got a couple entirely separate comments, actually. First one would apply to 3.1, the minutes from the May 23 meeting. Go ahead and read my comments. Questions, I questioned a statement in the May 23 minutes of the utility rate discussion, enough that I reviewed.
I'm sorry, but I can't hear. I can't hear anything. It's very faint.
Everybody can.
Give me, but.
Can you hear me now, Dave?
Well, that's better. Thank you.
I'll try to speak up as much as I can.
Thanks.
I questioned a statement in the May 23 minutes of the utility rate discussion, enough that I reviewed the recordings to confirm that it was transcribed correctly, accurately. The statement was attributed to Council White and Red. Quote, "He stated, 'Other cities go 20 years without increases,' unquote." It did, in fact, accurately reflect what was stated. Might be helpful to council and staff if Council White could provide the names of the local cities which have gone 20 years without municipal utility rate increases. Council White had also requested a rate increase history, which I think staff was negligent in not providing. A review of that history indicates that Council White's opinion that the eight and a half percent increase might be the highest ever was not true. As Mr. Mueller pointed out, since there was no increase in 2022, the annual average increase would be four and a quarter percent. The range of overall annual increases during the 2017 through 2021 rate increase schedule ranged from 10% in 2017, 9% in 2018, approaching 7% in each of the next three years. So four and a quarter annually is below average based on recent history. That's that one. The other one is kind of related to 3.2, but not specific to that particular resolution. It's shorter. I noticed in the current agenda that various resolutions are treated differently as to whether or not they require a public hearing. I'd be interested to find out who determines whether a resolution calls for a public hearing. I also discovered in the council voting section of the municipal code the following. Quote, "The vote on motions to read or adopt ordinances and resolutions is taken by roll call vote." This seems to indicate that approval of resolutions should not be included in the consent agenda approval vote, since that is not a roll call vote." That's it for now.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else wishes to speak in public comment? Maybe someone that just walked in? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And we will move on to consent agenda item number three. 3.1 minutes, May 23, 2023 regular meeting. And 3.2 resolution, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Office of State Fire Marshal for the Community Wildfire Risk Reduction Program Grant.
Can we address the concern about having resolutions in consent agenda? Are we okay with that?
We can have discussion right now if we so choose. Council Rittma.
It's always an option for to raise an objection to a particular resolution and take it off the consent agenda, as long as there isn't an objection to the resolution being on the consent agenda. I think it saves time and usually they're smooth matters with no controversy. So.
I don't have an objection. I just am not an attorney, so I don't know how to address what the rules say versus what we're doing.
Yeah, Mr. Ray Young.
I was just going to say that in my correspondence with Mr. Wilcox and my instructions to staff, we are going to do a roll call vote tonight on the consent agenda, which means the resolution did get a roll call vote. It's a simple way, because as Council Rittma is correct, things such as this, the resolution approving an agreement, this is a grant which has no matching funds. It's free money to us to help educate our citizens on fire dangers. And according to staff, we don't believe there's any reasonable objection might come to that type of resolution. And to meet the ordinance, we will do a roll call vote on it. Whatever works.
Solution.
Sounds good. Okay, any other discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah? All right. Let's take a roll call, Kenda.
I move.
Oh, thank you. Yes, we need someone to. So Council White moves to accept the resolution, adopt the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ooh, Council Wittrin beat the both of you. So seconded by Council Wittrin now.
To clarify, this is a motion to adopt the consent agenda, right?
Correct.
Not a resolution, but the consent.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Glance.
Yes.
Council Rittma.
Yes.
Council Caswell.
Yes.
Council One.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Council White.
Yes.
Council Wittrin.
Yes.
All right. Passes. Thank you. All right, let's move on to agenda item number four, a motion accepting the selection committee's recommendation for appointments to all city standing committees. Mr. Ray Young, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason, again, this was not on the consent agenda, because normally it would be something that would not be objected to, it's because if you had a chance to review that portion of the staff report, there were, after the meeting, there were a couple of changes in terms of citizen availability and citizens, two citizens who wanted to be on particular committees. And so, as I get to that portion of the staff report, since there were openings and there was no competition for the spots that those two citizens wanted, we decided to go ahead and put those two citizens in those spots to keep the committees fully staffed as much as possible. I'm getting to that page two of, there we go. Yeah, second page. Kenda had contacted several people to serve in on the Historic Landmarks Mission, but she declined. The CAC recommendation, Kenda also contacted Michelle Craver to ask if she'd be willing to serve on the HLC as well as being the alternate on the Parks Advisory Committee. Michelle was interested in serving as the alternate, but declined. So, you know, after, just if you kind of look through that, what happens is after we have that selection committee and then the committee sometimes suggests, well, they didn't apply for this, but we'd like them to serve on this if they could, then we go back and call every one of them and let them know. And the two changes, putting Woodrow Terrell on the Citizens Advisory Committee where there was an opening, was acceptable to him. And Kenda, I thought there was a second one there.
Jim Hill.
Oh, Jim Hill.
Jim Hill on the Historic Landmark.
Historic Landmark, and that was a vacant position also. So those are the only two changes that happened after maybe nominating committees meeting and based on our conversations with the individuals themselves.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any comments from council? Concerns? Questions? Nothing? I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comment and we'll just see if anybody wants to talk about our selection committee recommendations. The comments open. If you wish to make a comment, go ahead and same as the last time. No public comment, we can go ahead and close. If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I move that we accept the selection committee's recommendation and as set forth in the council packet.
Well, second.
Right. Thank you very much. Another roll call, Kenda.
Council Glance.
Yes.
Council Rittma.
Yes.
Council Caswell.
Yes.
Council One.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Council White.
Yes.
Council Wittrin.
Yes.
All right. Passes. Thank you very much, everybody, and thank you to our citizen volunteers. Without you all, we would be rudderless. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number five, public hearing and a resolution certifying the City of Troutdale's eligibility and election to receive state shared revenues for fiscal year 2324. Mr. Mueller, you have the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council. This is the second part of the, some of the required items from the state statute for the city to receive state shared revenues. One of the requirements was accomplished by the Budget Committee where there was a public hearing required there on the possible uses. It was held back on April the 18th, I believe, my date again, anyway, before the Budget Committee to fulfill that requirement. The next requirement is that there is a public hearing on this resolution before it's adopted that that's required by the state statute, which is why it's listed as a public hearing on the agenda, for those inquiry minds that wonder. In any case, the council has to consider any public testimony on that. And then their final step is required, the city needs to establish that it is eligible to receive based on the criteria in the statute, which is outlined in the resolution, and the city is indeed eligible. So the resolution declares that. And then finally, that the city elects to actually receive the state shared revenues that are available under the statute. The staff report lays out the process. The Exhibit A to the staff report is similar to the document that I went over with you during the Budget Committee meetings. There's approximately 1.9 million of state shared revenues that come to the city through various avenues. The 1.3 of it is the state gasoline tax, 99% of which goes into the street fund for the maintenance and preservation of city streets. 1% of that is mandated to go toward bicycles, paths and trails. And so that goes into our Trails, Bike Path and Trails Fund. The other sources are liquor revenue, cigarette tax and general revenue. Those all go into the general fund. And then this year, we're not indicating any election for the marijuana tax as we have in prior years with the adoption of the recent ordinance prohibiting additional retailers makes the city no longer eligible for that individual stream of shared revenues. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to address any questions.
All right. Any questions from council before we open up a public hearing? Council White.
On marijuana, so the existing dispenser that we have doesn't give us any revenue. Is that correct?
Once the ordinance was adopted prohibiting additional licensing of any type, whether it's retail or wholesale or processor, I forget, there's a couple of different categories of them. If there's any prohibition in a local jurisdiction's statutes, then it's not eligible to receive the shared revenues.
That's too bad.
It's, in earlier years, it was about $45,000 to $50,000 a year with the passage a couple of years ago of, what was it? The decriminalization was 110, was that the right measure number? Part of what the legislature did is they repurposed or redirected two-thirds of the funds that had been going to the cities into drug treatment programs. And so the share that was available to distribute to cities was dramatically reduced by the legislature. So it was running about $22,000 a year the last couple of years. So, you know, it's not a gigantic devastating loss.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right. Mr. Mueller, if there's nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and open up a public hearing regarding agenda item number five, resolution certifying the City of Troutdale's eligibility and election to receive state shared revenues for fiscal year 20232024. Public hearing is now open. If anybody wishes to address the council, now's the time. Anybody in council chambers? We don't have anybody on Zoom. All right. Not seeing anybody jump at the chance. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. If there's nothing else, no other discussion, I would entertain a motion for this resolution.
I move adoption of the resolution certifying the City of Troutdale's eligibility and election to receive state shared revenues for fiscal year 2324.
Well, second.
Council Glance.
Yes.
Council Rittma.
Yes.
Council Caswell.
Yes.
Council One.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Council White.
Yes.
Council Wittrin.
Yes.
All right. Passes. Thank you, everybody. We move on to agenda item number six, public hearing and resolutions. 6.1, a resolution adopting the City of Troutdale's fiscal year 20232024 annual budget and making appropriations. 6.2, a resolution imposing and categorizing ad valorem property tax levies for fiscal year 2324. Mr. Mueller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this resolution requires a public hearing. This one's a different state statute. The local budget law requires a public hearing on consideration of the budget that was approved by the Budget Committee and then forwarded to the City Council for consideration and adoption. During that process, the Budget Committee approved budget was put in the prescribed form and format and published to the required manner to fulfill the public notice requirements. It reflects the deliberations of the Budget Committee and provides for the categorization and specificity that is required under the local budget law in order to have appropriations available for the city to operate beginning July 1st. And I am happy to address any questions that the council may have.
All right. Any questions or concerns? No questions, we're going to do the same thing, open up public hearing on 6.1 and 6.2 resolutions. Public hearing is now open. If anybody in council chambers wishes to make remarks regarding 6.1, resolution adopting the City of Troutdale's fiscal year 20232024 annual budget and making appropriations, as well as 6.2, resolution imposing and categorizing ad valorem property tax levies for fiscal year 20232024. Now's the time. Okay. Go ahead and close public hearing. And again, motions.
Quick question. Do we need to vote on these together or can they be voted on separately?
We can vote on them separately because they are two separate resolutions.
Yes, please.
So let's, thank you, Council Glance. So let's go ahead and entertain a motion for 6.1.
I make a resolution adopting the City of Troutdale's fiscal year 20232024 annual budget and making appropriations.
Well, second to motion.
Council Glance.
Nope.
Council Rittma.
Yes.
Council Caswell.
Yes.
Council One.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Council White.
No.
Council Wittrin.
Yes.
All right. Passes. And now 6.2.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the final step, another requirement under the local budget law. Under the local budget law, the ad valorem property tax levies are established by the Budget Committee and referred to the City Council for adoption. So required that they're adopted by resolution. And then the budget officer is then required to file with the county assessor as, in order for the calculations to be done and applied to the property tax holders within the city. It's a component of the budget that was just adopted in the previous resolution. And it's pretty straightforward each year. The only really variance is depending on what the debt service amount might need to be. But it's the same as what was provided to the Budget Committee and was included in the required published form. So I'm happy to address any questions that the council may have.
Hey, not seeing anybody. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing for 6.2, a resolution imposing and categorizing ad valorem property tax levies for fiscal year 20232024. All right. Not seeing anybody again. Close public hearing. And a motion, please.
I make a motion for a resolution imposing and categorizing ad valorem property tax levies for fiscal year 20232024. Second up.
All right.
Council Glance.
Yes.
Council Rittma.
Yes.
Council Caswell.
Yes.
Council One.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Council White.
Yes.
Council Wittrin.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Move on to agenda item number seven, a public hearing and an ordinance introduction, an ordinance adopting the City of Troutdale Park, the City of Troutdale Park's master plan and amending the comprehensive land use plan goal eight to include modifications to the summary overview referenced to the 2023 Parks Master Plan and a new list of policies. Mr. Berniker, Community Development Director, the floor is yours. And Mr. Ray Young.
Mayor, I'm going to hijack as I get ready here. I figure this was a great opportunity for the council to meet a new employee. For many years, Tim Siri was our Parks Director. We were sorry to see him retire, but we have hired his replacement and I wanted to at least to see his face tonight as we were talking about parks. So Jonah Jacobson, would you stand, wave, smile, do a tap dance, whatever, so if you see Jonah around, he is our new park supervisor.
Awesome. Welcome, Jonah.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Berniker, it's all yours.
All right. Hold on just a sec. No, that's not. Yeah. Can you get the window to a second? Yeah, give me just. Sorry. I stormed you. Is that good? Look at that. Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm David Berniker, Director of Community Development. I'm joined by John Phinis, who's a Principal at MIG, a national recognized planning and design firm with an office in Portland. John was our primary contact on this project. Next. So we're here this evening to discuss the Parks Master Plan. The current master plan was completed in 2006. The Parks Master Plan update is a long-term plan for the City of Tripeville's park and recreation system. The plan updates inventory and existing conditions, documents, needs and priorities, identifies community-supported vision and goals, recommends projects and policies for next 20 years and provides a resource for multiple funding opportunities. Next, please. The request this evening is to adopt the City of Troutdale's Parks Master Plan and by doing so, update the comprehensive land use plan. Approval of the proposed plan does not require any particular addition or change to our park system. The plan is primarily used to identify potential improvements in our park system that would be desirable and allow those projects to be part of our long-range plans and grant requests. It's important to note that implementation of any item in a plan would require council approval through the budget process. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Phinis to describe in more detail the planning process which led to the 20-year vision that is before you this evening.
Great. Thank you, David. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me, council members, members of the public. My name is John Phinis. I'm a planner and project manager with MIG. As David mentioned, we're the consulting firm that's been helping the city with this project. So next slide, please. So I just have a few slides. I wanted to walk through the steps that we undertook with this process. This has been a multi-year process. This is a community-driven plan, so I want to talk a little bit about that and just provide some highlights on what this plan recommends. So first off, the City of Troutdale's been planning for parks for a long time. This is not the first time by any means. This is an update to the 2006 plan. But as we got started, this plan really builds on a lot of the recommendations and planning work that's been going on throughout the years. So here's just a list of some of the current plans and documents and studies that went into inform this plan, in particular, looking at the more recent town center plan, outcomes of the housing needs analysis, a lot of really, really helpful and recent data that was involved in that project, and of course, the comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. So the planning process, it was deliberate. It was step by step. We've had a few meetings with City Council, including at the very beginning where we asked you what you would like to see, some opportunities and challenges. But you can see there's been a lot of work since that time. So we started off with an inventory, very critical to understand what the city owns, maintains, what partners provide. And then we really got into community outreach. And again, this is a community-driven plan and process. The needs were identified from an extensive outreach process, which I'll talk about in just a second. And then action planning, which we got into in spring and fall of 2022. So based on those needs, the vision for the next 20 years, as David mentioned, and an assessment of existing conditions, the plan sets out for recommendations for the next several years. Then finally, plan development, and I'll talk about some of the review meetings and input that went into developing the final draft plan. So off the bat, Troutdale has a very extensive system, and the system includes lots of different types of parks. And so that's important for the plan. Each park functions a little differently, the maintenance requirements are a little different, and the needs are different as well. So understanding that system, including all 22 sites, developed parks of all kinds, undeveloped parks, natural areas, and that's a lot of acreage. So we're talking about a larger area across the city and needs and uses of all different kinds. Next slide, please. So from the beginning, we wanted to look at park access. Not everybody has great access to parkland and recreation facilities. And so this map shows you an early analysis that we did, looking at what we call a 10-minute walk distance. So how far do most people have to go to get to a developed park? So that's what this map shows. The shapes, those shaded areas are essentially showing you a 10-minute walk distance, quarter mile to a half mile. So what we found was there are definitely some areas, residential areas, that don't have great access. And so this helps us understand how can we improve access to some of those areas. So in particular, northwest near Halsey, south central near southeast Stark, and then in south Troutdale near Mount Hood Community College. We also looked at equity. Troutdale is a diverse city with lots of different needs. And so we, once again, took to mapping to understand the lay of the land. We looked at residential density. We looked at communities of color, non-white population. We looked at population that has a low income, so low average household income. And we also looked at populations that are younger, so under the age of eighteen. And again, putting this all together starts to kind of layer information to understand where are areas that are well served? Where are some areas that we might want to find that are traditionally underserved or may not have great access? So community involvement, I just thought this was important to highlight what we did, who we heard from, how we heard from the community. So over the last two years, we emerged from the pandemic, thankfully. So a lot of the opportunities were both online and in person. So that image there shows First Friday's event, we're in downtown. We had several meetings with the Parks Advisory Committee, we had two online questionnaires, and those totaled about six hundred respondents from those two. We had a town hall meeting, we had an event at the elementary school, and we had lots of different opportunities. So the important thing is we didn't rely on any one particular survey or meeting. It was really to hear from folks in various in-person and online activities. So from that, we developed the goals. What are we seeing? What is the community wanting to see? And again, these are overarching goals the city would like to achieve over the next five, ten, twenty years, a long term plan. So I'll just go over these quickly. Variety was something that we heard a lot of, not having the same thing in every park or recreation program. Really involving the community in making decisions and staying involved and knowing what's happening. Access to natural areas, Troutdale is surrounded by nature, there's nature in the city. And so we heard a lot about how important nature is to integrate into the system. Next slide. Trails and connectivity, that was very important. So getting around by walking, by biking, making it accessible, making it safe and inclusive, and maintenance. I don't think there was any event we went to that we didn't hear how important maintenance was. So not getting ahead of ourselves, building more, adding more until we can make sure we can maintain it. And then finally, looking at a diverse range of funding sources, both for operations, maintenance and capital projects. And that includes expanding and strengthening partnerships with the city. Next slide. So that informed the vision, the twenty year vision. These just show you kind of a snapshot of some of the categories of all the different projects and how they fit into the twenty year vision. And this, you can see by those little icons on the list on the right of the map, a lot of reinvestment in existing parks. We heard a lot about deferred maintenance, about adding new facilities into existing parks. So ADA accessible pathways, play area replacements, and so on. Preservation and connectivity, a lot about the trail system. We relied heavily on the city's transportation system plan and the adopted non-motorized transportation system to incorporate into the park system plan. Expanding and accommodating, Troutdale gets a lot of visitors, so making sure we have capacity to both accommodate visitors but also encourage visitation. So things like the dis golf course, new trail heads and skateboard. And then a few future parks. There aren't many opportunities in Troutdale, I think everyone knows that, but there are some opportunities to consider, and we show these on the map. So a new neighborhood park, a community park, and the Sandy River Greenway, which is of course underway. Next slide. So some other key recommendations, a lot of this was about specific projects, but this is also about policies and programs that the city can take on. So a few that we list here, making sure we're making the best out of everything we have. So programming underused sites, partnerships we've mentioned, signage is very important. We heard a lot about people not knowing how to get around, where to go. Sustainability is important, both in construction and maintenance practices. Connectivity, increased maintenance resources. And then finally, expanding programming for teens and young adults. So big part of the community of Troutdale, making sure we have opportunities for younger folks. So down to the last two slides, just a recap of really how the Parks Advisory Committee, City Council and Planning Commission has been involved. And I wanted to both acknowledge the fact that this has been ongoing throughout the process. And then when we finally had a draft plan and put all this together, winter of twenty twenty three, a very extensive involvement from both the Parks Advisory Committee and Planning Commission. So you can see here, beginning around January eighteenth, we had the first meeting with Parks Advisory Committee to review the draft plan. At that point, adoption was recommended. We had a Planning Commission meeting to consider the recommendation from the Parks Committee on March ninth. A second continued meeting on March twenty second, where we heard from the Parks Committee they would like one more opportunity to take a look at changes that the Planning Commission recommended. We had that meeting with Parks Committee on the April eighteenth, and then finally, the third Planning Commission hearing with recommended adoption by the city council. So to recap tonight, as David mentioned, this is replacing the two thousand and six Parks Master Plan with this new Parks Master Plan. Going along with that is updating goals and policies of goal eight of the comprehensive plan. You'll see in the staff report, meeting the criteria of Troutdale Development Code, both the approval criteria and the procedure required for a type four application. The Parks Advisory Committee recommended adopting the Parks Master Plan to the Planning Commission. And as I mentioned, the Planning Commission recommended adopting the city council to adopt the Parks Master Plan and the accompanying comprehensive plan amendments. I believe that wraps up our presentation. Is there more?
Yeah. Want to take that one? Yeah, so moving forward, staff recommends approval, adoption of the master plan and adoption of the proposed amendments to the comp plan. With that, we can take questions.
Can I have the screen? So fast. Before we open up public hearing, if council has any questions or comments or concerns, now's the time. Counselor Glance.
Yep, I have a couple of comments. Totally in favor of maintenance, I think, you know, maintaining what you have is a really good choice. A little concerned, I appreciate why it's done. In the CP one area, pages aren't numbered. It's one of the maps and it shows like how there's the Sweetbrier Elementary School and the Sweetbrier Park. You're not allowed on there during school hours, even the public park. So that's an area I walk all the time and it is blocked during school hours. So I'm always a little hesitant to say, oh, look, here's this great, you know, school and grasslands, it's great, but you can't access it when kids are there. That being said. For the maintenance, the other one I have a bit of concern with is the five year plan. It's table seven on page fifty two, where it has a spending nine point three million dollars on parks in the next five years. And I'm, I appreciate all the public feedback. I was really pleased to see how both planning and parks worked together on this to get it in a really good place. But with the recent failure of the Gresham Bond, and I went to a recent council meeting or listened in, and they're talking already about how three cities don't pay enough for police and fire. I think we're going to get hit pretty hard and I don't want to be in a position where we go have to ask voters for more money. So I'm concerned about spending that much on parks, knowing that we have some issues coming up. If it was in a twenty year plan, all for it, little concerned about the five year.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Glance. Any other comments or concerns from council? All right, not hearing anything. Oh, Counselor White.
You know, there's a, just have a big push regionally to connect everything with trails and stuff. But I would like to see if we're going to propose a trail, that there's there's security measures in place. Because a trail is just out of sight, it's not like a business center where you can see people trying to camp or stay on the street. On a trail, it's much more difficult. And we're learning from other cities how expensive that can be. And I also think there should be some consideration when a trail butts private property in the form of like a fence, bare minimum. So I know it'd be an added cost, but I think it's only fair. Otherwise, you become like a prisoner at your own home, where you know, you're afraid to leave because the public's right there utilizing your backyard. And also, you know, if we're going to approve like this Beaver Creek Trail, I think and then hopefully that would, that would be the solution to connect people into Glen Auto Park. And we're not going to keep trying to find other ways to connect it. You know, let's, in other words, let's pick one and stick to it and not have, you know, five projects that do basically the same thing. Just kind of more practicality. And I'd also like to see the list of projects that never got done off the two thousand and six master plan. Because I know a lot of us have been patiently waiting for some of those projects to get done. And Ray's been great and his staff, they've been really checking off the boxes at a really good rate. So I'm not saying no to complain by any means. I think they have their hands full right now also. So I kind of agree with Sandy on that five year plan. I think they have five years of work right now that's started already, so I think it's kind of unrealistic. And my other concerns are basically, you know, the big one is how much is park system development fee going to go up because of this? And are we going to have to have more staff? Are we going to have to have a park user fee? I saw it was proposed, it looks like it got stricken. And I think that's probably a good idea because we are going to face some, some big expense. We have a new levy, ready Columbia, I think they're calling it something different now, but that'll be a new bill for all residents. We also have looking at police and fire cost increases, and there's more, you know. Those were my main concerns, it's kind of like, how are we going to pay for this? And I'm surprised to see more parks added on because the last time this came up, we talked about improving the parks we have. Because, you know, we're at the point now where we're almost providing parks for other cities. Our own people aren't using them as much as they used to because they're getting taken over. And I also had concerns about the leasing out, creating commercial activity as a possible source of revenue in the parks. Because I think that directly competes with our commercial district. And it tends to be of an unfair advantage. You get a really good deal when you do a concession vary in a park and then it kind of becomes the focus in a way, it can take over a park even. I'd like to see our parks just be more of a place to go and recreate and for the kids to go and play and not, not have it just be another commercial district. You know, if you want that, you can go to downtown, you can go to the town center or the food cart pods or whatever. But you start introducing that into the park and it's a lot of extra work for staff. And it kind of takes away the serenity and the quietness that I enjoy when I, when I visit a park. Don't mind the pups that land coming through the parking lot, but start allowing permanent structures in parks is not something I would agree with. And I don't, I don't think we get any revenue out of that either. I think it ends up costing us more than, more than, it is not a revenue source by any means. Thank you, nice presentation.
All right, Counselor Glance, you have your hand raised.
One quick idea, just thought of, I would love to see something where we ask residents, you know, what's more important to you? Not just what do you want to see for parks, but is it more important that the parks are safe? Or that, you know, you have, you don't have an additional bond measure to pay for police and fire? I'd love it if it was prioritized because it could be that people would rather, you know, pay for that and have that. So rather than to say, what kind of parks do you want, I'd like it to be a little bit more in context.
Okay, any other comments from council? All right, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. So we're going to open up public hearing regarding ordinance, the introduction of an ordinance adopting the city of Troutdale Parks Master Plan and amending the comprehensive land use plan goal eight to include modifications to the summary overview referenced to the twenty twenty three Parks Master Plan and a new list of policies. Again, no one is on Zoom, so if anybody in council wishes to make a comment, go ahead and approach, I'm going to give the desk to the public. Approach, state your name, city of residence for the record.
Hello, Diane Castillo-White, city of Troutdale. I'm looking at for, number four, park system recommendations. On page thirty nine, it talks about updating the Glen Auto Master, Park Master Plan. And one of the things it says at the end of the paragraph is potential repurpose of the existing picnic area to the south of the site for camping. We get a lot of people there all hours of the night. They come out at midnight, two AM, all sorts of hours. We don't know if they're an extension of Thousand Acres. They come in before it turns dark and they make their way down and then other people join them, they don't leave till the morning. My concern is that without night security and our limited amount of Multnombe County sheriffs and such, it's hard enough to patrol Glen Auto Park for the people that, when I'm there all the time, that, you know, that do marijuana use. They stay there for several to eight hours, everybody's smelling everything stuff and then the alcohol and everything else that's going on. I'm thinking that's just not a good idea with Thousand Acres and which is because we're having this homeless or houseless issue. And I don't, yeah, it's going to be really difficult to know who was, who was there, who paid, who didn't pay and, and all that. Also, I've taken my grandchildren there, I have four grandchildren, ages seven and under. And there'll be some people there that look like they stayed there all night and they, they're allowed, they have their dogs, they, they don't have a home. And you just, you have to just be cautious of anybody that's around your, your small children or grandchildren or whatever. I'm just thinking that's not a good idea because they also go to the, closer to the waterfront. That, that area is a lot larger than that, that picnic area that is, is a proposed park for camping. And also, I still like the idea of a skate park, but I'm thinking when we have to prioritize our dollars and we're talking about equity, I really would just like us to know soccer fields get used by more people. I don't know what are, how often we book, I remember before they were always booked and there was still a need. So I'm just saying when we do our parks that maybe we prioritize the use of the, the majority of children or adults that use whatever parks needed, just maybe to consider that as a priority. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Anybody else wishes to make comment? Now's the time. Mr. Walcott?
Paul Walcott, Troutdale. There are a couple of proposals in this plan that I opposed pretty much from the beginning. One of them was the parks maintenance utility fee. And that was subsequently deleted by the Parks Advisory Committee. So that's good. And also, kind of following up on what Diane was addressing, that was actually my other point of opposition. The reference to the camping on page thirty nine, the bottom of the second column, or the bottom of the first column. I was opposed to camping in and of itself in that location. But then I found, I found out recently, since then, that there's an outdoor preschool being held there. So that makes me even more opposed to even considering camping there. So that makes me even more opposed to even considering camping there. So I also wanted to mention that when planning, I did vote against adoption on the basis of camping being included in there. So I just wanted to make that clear and hope you considered dropping that one. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Right, not seeing anybody else, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. We could hand it back to staff. There's any other comments or questions or concerns, Counselor Rittma?
How did the repurposing the south end of Glen Auto Park for camping get in there? This is a huge document, there's lots of things that I probably didn't notice. But the two public comments both brought that up and, you know, how would something like that get in there? It doesn't even, it not only doesn't it seem like a good idea, it doesn't seem logical.
Yeah, this is John, I can I can address that. Let's let's find the right page so everybody's looking at the same thing.
I think it's page 39.
There we go, okay. Yeah, so this was one of the recommendations that came up in the conversations that we had with the Parks Advisory Committee. And at the time, and as as written, there's no recommendation to provide camping. I think what the Parks Advisory Committee, my interpretation was, they were exploring the idea of possibly making that a potential use in that park. I'm not saying it would happen or that it could happen, but just here's an idea that we need to explore further. So I think at the time, there was a lot of, obviously, some discussion about feasibility, if this is the right use, safety being an issue, as was mentioned tonight. So the way it's worded in the plan now, the Parks Advisory Committee was very careful about making sure the wording wasn't providing a recommendation, which it's not. But having something in this plan to say if there's further study that's done, this could be a possibility, not that it works or not that it should be, but it could be something that would fit with further study. Again, there's a lot more that would need to come out of this. But the short answer is this was discussed to some length at the Parks Advisory Committee, including meetings that I wasn't part of when we were discussing the Parks Master Plan.
And I would just add, the key word was potential. So again, there's no commitment on any way or form of just an idea thrown out if it evolves for all of you to consider its potential in the future.
The, I guess, just to be clear, there, the south end of Glen Auto Park is the area past the restrooms back near the back fence, is that what we're talking about?
I believe so, yes, I believe so.
I thought just seems an absolutely awful place to have camping. I, that's my opinion anyway. It, uh, anyway, I'm stunned. And I hadn't noticed it before. One other quick question, oh, Ray, I'll let you go ahead.
I I was just gonna add to that, we've had discussions in the past, farther south than where you're thinking, there is a very large wooded area that is technically under, I think, the Department of State lands. And there's been discussions before there are trails down there. I think this may have come from an offshoot of potentially seeing if, again, for want of a better term, I like these plans, I call them like wish lists. It might be nice to have this, it might be nice to have that, we're just not ready, but we need to know what's possible out there. And so I think we're looking farther south than that fence in terms of what might be possible down there with the cooperation of partners like the state. Because I'm looking at the Google Earth map, Google Earth map, excuse me. There's there's probably, gosh, at least five, six acres of woodland south of the park that's just undeveloped at this point that is a potential for something like that.
Right, but then it doesn't really belong in the Troutdale City Parks Master Plan. That's outside of our jurisdiction. And anyway, I'll think about that. But one one other quick question, where is the proposed dog park? I just couldn't find it, the document's so big.
The dog park is going into the wooded area about, oh, about five acres due west of the baseball field, southwest of Imagination Station, between the Parks Department and the baseball field. We have right next to the Wood Village water tanks. It's out well with the Parks Advisory Committee because it doesn't, it's not adjacent to any residential homes. It already has good parking because of Imagination Station and the ballpark. And we owned it already, so it worked out as a good location for that.
It's already parkland, is that right? Yes, I thought so, okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Glantz, you got your hand raised.
Yep, I was at those parks meetings and the way this got on there originally, it was part of a discussion of how to provide local camping for people who just, you know, wanted to be able to go with their families, have maybe just a single night when they couldn't, you know, either couldn't afford or couldn't travel to locations further away. And that was kind of the intent. There was a lot of discussion about safety and that that would have to come first. But that was the intent behind how that even was mentioned in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Yeah, Counselor Lynn.
We, if it was determined that we wanted to get rid of that area and make it camping, is that, I'm sure there's a process that has to go through to get approved to do that? Or would it, if it's in this plan, they can just kind of do it whenever they would want?
That's not, that's not entirely true, no. In fact, there there are some recommendations in the plan that talk about what would have to happen to make that work. Going all the way back to the budget. And so I think there's some good points about proposed projects, recommended projects, the 20-year project list, so the the build out of the vision, and then the short-term, five-year, what we're calling the action plan. And none of that is is budgeted. So any any potential project, and this is maybe getting away from your question a bit, but any potential project would first have to be in the city's budget to go forward. And you can see that there are a couple of different projects, including Riverfront Park, currently under design, that's part of that budget. So that's about a $3.5 million project that is already essentially accounted for. So there are some things that have been budgeted, some things that haven't. Specific to Glen Auto Park and potential camping, any any change like that would have to go through the Parks Commission, Parks Committee to consider. And there would likely be some kind of land use change. So likely go to the Planning Commission, potentially go to the City Council. But there would have to be further review for almost every project in this, that's recommended in this plan. So essentially, the short answer is there is not, by adopting this plan, by approving this plan, it isn't to say that all these projects can proceed without any further study or consideration because there's a lot more that would have to take place.
All right, any other questions or comments from counsel? Counselor White?
So I I thought that had been scrubbed. So I I didn't, I missed out also the camping in Glen Auto Park. But that's something counsel could request right now, that that be removed from this plan. It sounds like, I mean, I can count in the room, it seems like there's plenty of votes to remove that.
Yeah, and this is an introduction to the ordinance, so we're gonna see this back again for hopefully a final vote to approve. But if that's something that the council has an appetite for, that's definitely something we could send staff away with, a recommendation to remove that camping.
Well, I would request that, I would request that we remove the words and potential repurposing of the existing picnic area to the south of the site for camping. Just remove those words and bring it back that way. I don't know if that passes muster with the rest of the council, but I.
I I I agree with Counselor Rittma and a couple of citizens that made comment that it just, it just doesn't seem like a logical direction that we should be taking right now with Glen Auto Park. And if it does happen that it is, majority of that is Department of State lands, then I don't really see the relevance as to why it should be inside the Troutdale Parks Master Plan moving forward anyways. Because it's not up to us, so it shouldn't be inside our our documents. But I'm fine with that if the, if we can kind of take a temperature of the council, if that's a direction we want to move forward with, then I'm fine with that. But like I said, this is the introduction and we'll see it back again. But yeah.
I'm good with removing it.
Thank you.
I guess that's my question is, okay, intro and like we give, we're like providing them this feedback. So if it comes to us and then we can't, we don't want to adopt it because of that one, it seems silly and.
Right, but like, like they say, stated, it just, if we did adopt it with it in there, doesn't mean that it's automatic and right now, yeah, it'll still go through its process.
At the time, we'd go as adopted as amended too.
And we can change the rule whenever we want anyways, so.
I just wanted to add too, it's a planning document, so it's not, it's not to say that this is, you know, set in stone for the next 20 years. There there are gonna be changes, there are gonna be requests to Parks Committee and City Council about a new activity, you know, pickleball wasn't around however many years ago. So things will come up and there's always opportunity to amend it.
Yeah, and I don't think this is taking lightest to the work that you all have done, that staff has done, that the Planning Commission and the Parks Committee have done. I think the intent was good and I just think that chewing on it a little bit more, just realizing that it might not have a good place right now moving forward, so.
There there's people, you know, camping there right now that shouldn't be out there. And it makes it dangerous for families and a lot of parents drop their kids off there, you know, and they go running out. Nothing you want is a problem like that. And I have one other question too, I noticed in your presentation about allowing off-leash dogs in certain parks. Is that something you can elaborate on?
And just to clarify, that's in addition to the off-leash dog area that we just talked about in Columbia Park. I think it's that.
So you're not talking about the dog, the new dog park? You're talking about potentially doing it at other parks?
Yeah, let me, because we did, that was another item that came up at the Parks Advisory Committee level. So let me go to the the spot where I think this lives in the plan.
Just so you can load add on to that, that is a discussion the Parks Advisory Committee is having right now as to how we might want to amend our ordinances to allow some type of dogs to be allowed in our parks under certain conditions. So that's under current discussion with the Parks Advisory Commission and we don't have a specific recommendation yet, but it'll come back to council.
It's not in the plan, man, because I saw.
It might be mentioned in the plan as possible changes, but any changes would have to be approved by the council since it is an ordinance.
And I apologize, I don't see that mentioned, I remember we discussed it, but I don't see the additional recommendation for a, you know, kind of citywide look at off-leash dogs and off-off-leash dog activities in city parks.
So maybe if if you want to look through that again and bring it back.
I saw it on your PowerPoint just now, and it's, I believe, when I asked the question.
Yeah, I believe there were a couple of items on the PowerPoint that talked about that. One was what we heard from the community about interest in an off-leash dog area. But that would be, that would be a, you know, off-leash dog park. And then in the in the short-term project list, there was the need for the off-leash dog area. So I think it was really just the one site.
Columbia Park.
You know, people are, they treat their dogs like they're children these days, but not everybody is in the same game. You know, you can say on leash, but you know, all you have to do is go to a dog park. None of them are on a leash, which is fine, you know, if it's at a dog park, that's one thing. You know, that's like, we kind of approved building a dog, a special area for for people with dogs and not allowing it in every park. Just a liability for the city and, you know, not everyone cleans up after, not everyone's a good pet owner.
Not everybody cleans up after their kids either, city parks, so.
He must've worked at a restaurant. Just, okay, that would be an ordinance change anyway, so that would definitely come across our desk.
You have a desk? I don't have a desk. Oh, okay. Any other comments or questions from counsel? Okay, so just to reiterate, I think what we're looking at is page 39, the bullet point update the Glen Auto Park Master Plan, the last sent, part of the sentence, striking that add potential repurposing of the existing picnic area to the south of the site for camping.
Yes.
Leave everything else ADA accessibility improvements, parentheses, site-wide, period. I think that's what we're looking at.
What about that five-year plan? And I heard some other discussion about what we already have going on versus what we're looking at adding?
Sure, I, this is John again, I can elaborate. And I will refer you to the right page so everybody's seeing the same thing. So on, where are we here, on page, on the on the plan document, so page 52, there's the table seven. So the five-year capital project list. So you'll see in that table, there are a few few different columns. You know, the project description, the planning level cost, potential funding sources. And then off to the right, there are two columns. One is the fact that it's been identified in the Public Works Capital Improvement Program. So that's a project that's already been identified. So you can see that there are almost, well, most of these are identified in the in the CIP. And on the right, you can see, when we were developing the plan, we were looking at the 2021, 2022 budget. But you can see that there are some projects that were budgeted in that fiscal year budget. So Depot Park Improvements was one, the Riverfront Park is the other, and then some partial funding for Trail Project and Sunrise Park. So there are a few few that have been earmarked for for current budget and then a few that have been identified in the Public Works CIP.
And the Beaver Creek Greenway, that was the one, is that the one that had mostly grant funding? I didn't think we had a $450,000 portion of that.
That that is one of the projects that came out of this process, so that hasn't already been identified. Yeah, so the funding that that we have in this table is a combination of general fund dollars, grant funding, and the Parks Improvement Fund.
So it's not necessarily that we'd be spending $9.2 million of taxpayer money. Some of that would be coming from grants.
That's that's correct. And the city is is good at grant funding, there's some great grant grant funding programs specifically for parks in Oregon. So that's correct. So not all of these are expected to be from the general fund, nor should they. That was one of the recommendations, was to diversify, you know, funding for for parks and recreation.
One example of that is the Riverfront Park. We received, how much did we receive from Metro?
Two, almost two million from Metro, 750,000 from the state parks.
Yeah, so that's a big chunk of that, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Glantz. Okay, there's nothing else. I believe we are good. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it, thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then, do you know when we're getting this back, Ray?
The 27th.
The 27th, end of the month?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
We will move on to agenda item number eight, a resolution to unify the name of the North-South Road Kane 257th, Graham to 257th Avenue. We'll give Mr. Berniker a couple minutes, or a couple, a minute? Yeah, seconds, we'll go a couple seconds to get ready from one agenda item to the next. And then as soon as you're ready, it's all yours.
Okay, so good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm David Berniker, Director of Community Development. And I think I'm joined by Travis Holton, the City Public Works Chief Engineer, who's, I think, online. And we're here this evening to discuss the renaming of 27th to 257th between southeast Stark Street and northwest Graham Road to 257th Avenue. So the rename is for the streets. So the rename is for the street segment between Stark and Northwest Graham by the airport to two fifty-seventh Avenue. Two fifty-seven currently exhibits a patchwork of street names. This patchwork has led to inconsistencies in addressing, wayfinding and signage, and official record-keeping at the county and city. Adoption of this project will result in more reliable street addresses, making travel easier for residents, businesses and tourists, as well as critically important first responders. This tag-team coordinated effort between, with Maloma County and ODOT, excuse me, this, this is a tag-team effort with Maloma County and ODOT. Under Oregon law, the city is the primary road authority for the street naming within, within its corporate boundaries. Therefore, the city of Troutdale is the first agency that needs to act. Once the official action is taken by the road agencies, the agencies along with the postal service will take the appropriate measures to update the signage and street names as needed. Next. I just kind of wanted to show a map, it's basically the same map, but different graphics with an aerial, just showing how the road changes. There's four different segments, again, to the confusion and the issues with um, service providers. Next. So talking about some recent actions regarding two fifty-seven, in twenty-eighteen, per resolution twenty-four twenty-seven, the city renamed the segment of Northwest Graham Road from its southern terminus to Northwest Frontage Road to Northwest two fifty-seven Drive. It's a mouthful. While this was beneficial, it did not go far enough in creating the necessary, necessary clarity along the entire segment. With the proposed rename from Stark to Graham to two fifty-seven Avenue, the, the entire segment will become clearer to all users. Next. Which brings us to staff recommendation, which is adoption of the resolution renaming the street segment between Southeast Stark and Northwest Graham to two fifty-seven, to two fifty-seven Avenue. That's what I got.
I will say that if we decide to do this, and we may not, we may like the patchwork names, my wife will be so happy. She hates the fact that there's so many different names all around this area. I mean, we're not, it's not just here in Troutdale, it's not just two fifty-seventh.
Mr. Mayor, is that a declaration of bias?
Maybe I should recuse myself, but I will tell you, I didn't, she does not know we are doing this, so I have not brought this up, nor, nor will I until the sign changes and she sees it on her own. Um, but yeah, no, it's, it's uh, I believe it'll be, in my opinion, not my wife's opinion, that it'll be a, a good change. Uh, Mr. Travis Holden, Public Works Director and Chief Engineer, would you like to uh, chime in?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I don't really have anything to add. This is really a pretty straightforward uh, matter. I mean, I think we all know what it's about. This is a what are the confusing uh, mix of names and we're trying to bring clarity to it and so are our partners. Uh, this has all been collaborated amongst the agencies, so that we're all, uh, all of the agency staff are all in favor of this change and, and uh, and we've also uh, done some preliminary coordination for implementation, should the council choose to, to uh, take this action.
Great. Uh, comments or questions from council? Councilor White?
I'm willing to change it to Lauer Lane.
No, thank you. No, thank you.
That's consistent. I was just gonna say, you know, this came up with Cherry Park, cause there's two Cherry Parks really close to each other. And, you know, the citizenry came up and said, you know, that's a hardship. I've had that same address for almost forty years, some of them. And we didn't change it. And it was just a grid, problem with the grid, so I'm just kind of worried, you know, have we reached out to residents or businesses? Cause I, I wouldn't want my address to change.
We have not.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, there has not been an extensive amount of reach, outreach, again, to the point, I think that one of the primary drivers is the service providers, that it's easier for them to know where they are along the segment. So that's, so that's kind of the main part of it.
The other thing to remember is that most of this is already two fifty-seventh drive versus avenue. The post office has said tons of people use avenue instead of driving it and they have no problem getting their mail, so it, it, it doesn't really matter for most people's mail service along that stretch, um, because they use both of them anyway for their deliveries. It's the only, the Graham Road section. Dairy Queen and the hotel, maybe they'll miss some mail, but that's about it.
And the wastewater treatment plant.
And the wastewater treatment plant, may not get their paychecks, I don't know, we forgot something.
To be grateful, you could call it entrance to the National Scenic Yore or something like that.
That's, that's a mouthful.
So yeah, so the conversation with the post office, they don't see any hardships or issues with the change of address.
Good. Any other questions, comments or concerns? Councilor President Ripma.
I um, I had expected that you would have notified the, anyone who has an address on these streets that we're renaming the street. But I agree, in this case, it, on the Cherry Park case, someone was being asked to renumber his house on the same street. And that really is, that was too much. Uh, and uh, I thought, but in this case, since it's just, I think I would feel better voting for this if everyone whose address is along that street was notified that henceforth they're gonna have to call, uh, have the, use two fifty-seventh Avenue for their address. Does that present any problems? And see if anybody objects. I have to admit, it doesn't seem like anyone will, other than the Graham Road stretch. So, I don't know. I, uh, is there any reason we, they weren't notified? It's kind of a big change, I mean, kind of.
Mr. Trumpke?
Uh, Councilor Ripma, in response, the Graham Road piece is the only part that has a potential issue. Uh, and there are actually no driveways in there. If you look at the Outlet Mall, it, all of those driveways or their parking lot is actually two fifty-seventh Way, uh, which is a separate city street. Uh, and the, uh, the uh, the, the properties across on the west side of Graham Road are, uh, don't have driveways. So there's no active driveway users on that portion of Graham. Uh, the only real difference is, is two fifty-seventh Drive to two fifty-seventh Avenue.
And, and my understanding is that there's two apartment buildings along there, or that there's thirty-two addresses, it might be thirty-three, that are changing in total along this segment. And it happens within two buildings.
And I will just add, make even more work for staff if the council wants it. I'd be happy to have staff to send a letter to those thirty-two people, let them know that they can comment by written, Zoom or appearing at your meeting on June, June twenty-seventh. If they have any objection or problem, Councilor Ripma, if, if that will make you feel more comfortable that we've uh, crossed the T's and dotted the I's, it's not a huge imposition.
Will, will anyone, will a post op, will somebody be informing people that they should start using two fifty-seventh Avenue in future? That they don't need to necessarily change their address, but the, that's really what it will be? I I don't know, it just seems odd for the city to rename a street. Some people might be using two fifty-seventh Way.
If I could, um, as I think maybe Ray mentioned or alluded to earlier.
Or Drive.
What we found is that uh, the, there are many people along what is now called two fifty-seventh Drive. Uh, many of them, maybe most of them already call their address two fifty-seventh Avenue in practice. So it, it, we don't, don't anticipate that it's really going to affect them. Certainly, uh, anytime there's, uh, I'm speaking on, maybe on behalf of another department right now, but it's really been my experience that, that the practice, that anytime there's an address change, people are certainly notified of it, but in practice, a lot of folks will say, oh, I didn't even know that my address was actually two fifty-seven Drive. I've always called it two fifty-seventh Avenue and gotten my mail without any problem. Uh, it's also worth noting that the addresses that would significantly change on Graham, uh, north of the freeway technically have already been changed by the resolution in twenty-eighteen.
Yeah.
Speaking, they're, they're presently two fifty-seven Drive below, probably still going by Graham because uh, the, uh, your Public Works Department refrained from changing the signs at the request of the addressing folks in, in uh, Community Development, uh, while they were preparing to make those changes. So.
Somebody did contact the post office and a, and addressed two fifty-seventh Drive Troutdale will still receive their mail? I mean, do you, did I understand that?
Yes, my understanding is the post office says they won't have any issues because there's no competing other drives in town.
I agree.
But like I said.
How many people would you have to notify?
About thirty-three?
I think that's, I think.
And, and you already have, you know who they are and, I mean, you know their addresses and you'll just, you just send them and if they wanted to object, I guess personally, I would prefer that they be given the opportunity to tell them, we're gonna do it at the twenty-seventh meeting, June twenty-seventh, if that's the date. And uh, unless, if they want to object, that object before then or come to the meeting.
Yeah, well, somebody's saying speak now or forever hold your peace.
Right, if nobody comes, I'll have no problem with it. I, if the rest of the council, I'm, I don't want to fall on my sword about this, but I just think, I think, I truly think that should have been done. Uh, they, they should have been notified, then I would have voted for this without a problem, cause I don't think we had any objections, but since they haven't been notified, it does seem like it should be, they should be given a chance to object.
Councilor Wittrick?
Yeah, I just agree with uh, Councilor Ripma, and I think we should hold this over until the next meeting and give the public a chance to be notified.
Uh, do we have any objection from, oh, Councilor Glance?
I just have a question. Is there a southwest and a northwest on this and where does that change at?
I can answer that. The, that, it would follow, yeah, it would follow the city's regular grid system, so the dividing line for the city's grid are Historic Columbia Highway, uh, north-south, and then uh, Buxton Troutdale Road east-west.
Okay, so it's not just a single name, it's still has a north and a south?
Correct.
Thanks.
White?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering, since we're doing, I agree with um, Councilor Ripma and Councilor Whit. So after, after the Cherry Park incident, I think we should definitely contact those residents, but um, I'm also wondering, isn't, isn't two fifty-seventh Way adding to the confusion too? Cause that road doesn't even go north and south, it, it goes east in, in the outlet mall. I'm wondering if, if we shouldn't think about maybe changing that, that name. You know, our new developer might, might have some good suggestions on a new name for that road as well. I'm just thinking, cause it does add to the confusion. You know, why would you have two fifty-seven, suddenly you see two fifty-seventh Way and it's going in completely different direction?
Good question, can't answer other than that's an odd road that goes both east-west or south. It goes all the way in the mall, up around the mall, hits the area there. That was done thirty years ago when the mall was built, so I'm sure would be happy to talk to the developer and the mall owners if they want to change that, it's.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be a nice touch too, to change that.
White Boulevard.
No, no, White, White Way, cause we're doing it the White Way.
No, that means undoubted if you. Don't make me anything after me just said.
Can I just clarify, it's, we're just talking about the, the thirty-three or thirty-two people that are affected, it's two fifty-seventh Road to two fifty, two fifty-seven Drive to two fifty-seventh Avenue. We're talking about a drive and an avenue, that's all.
Yes.
Not the number.
Nope.
Correct.
Not numbers.
And it's, and the southwest is still the same.
Okay. I mean, I just personally, like, don't think it's a big deal. Like, it's the avenue and, but it's not the, not the, not the number, so I just wanted to be known, like, I, I am fine to wait, like, I don't think it's a big deal in this term. I would vote on it right now, but I just wanted to know that I don't mind waiting. If it affects everybody else comfortable, but I just wanted to clarify that it was not the actual number or the name that was for these residents.
Yep. Uh, Councilor Caswell, do you uh, kind of share the same sentiment going around right now, waiting and notifying the couple, couple dozen people?
Yeah, pretty much.
All right, yeah, I'm fine with it too, so.
Do we need a motion to hold over?
Um, no, I think we can just send staff away and bring it back to the, it is the twenty-seventh, right?
Right, two weeks, so we've got plenty of time to get letters out to everybody and give them ample opportunity to uh, respond if they want to.
Okay.
Still don't need a table or anything?
No, no, it's a table, it would mean it's dead.
That'd make it worse.
You, you could make a motion to uh, set it for a date certain, but.
We don't have to.
You don't.
If we don't have to, let's not.
Councilor Glance?
Can we still get public opinion on this? Or open it up for public comment?
Uh, yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Yeah, no, good idea. So let's open up public comment on this resolution uh, to unify the name of the North-South Road Kane two fifty-seventh Graham to two fifty-seventh Avenue. Uh, if you wish to make public comment in council chambers, now's the time. I wouldn't expect anything less. This was the one that you came for?
That's right.
All right, I'm excited.
This was my weekend project. Wilcox Troutdale. This uh, this wasn't, this isn't as simple as uh, changing the name from point A to point B. It's a lot more complicated, in my opinion. Anyway. Thought about getting this written portion too, but kind of difficult with in-person and Zoom both, to get it to everybody. And hopefully I can read it without losing my place. Now, several bullet, you hear me okay, Dave?
Yes.
Okay. Several bullet points regarding this resolution. I'll start by working my way from north to south. Resolution referred to that was intended to change the North-South segment of Graham Road north of I eighty-four was resolution number twenty-four twenty-seven. Passed on July tenth, twenty-eighteen, when Casey Ryan was mayor. So I'm talking five years ago. Well, the change may have been made on paper, the street sign at the corner of Harla Road and Graham Road still reads Graham. As do the street addresses for the Comfort Inn and the Dairy Queen, among others. Also, Google Maps still designates that North-South section as Graham Road. As one approaches Graham slash two fifty-seventh on the South Frontage Road eastbound, overhead signs direct drivers to Graham Road to the north under I eighty-four and two fifty-seventh Avenue not drive to the south. Beginning at the intersection with Historic Columbia, Columbia River Highway, the cross-street signs for two fifty-seventh read two fifty-seventh Drive. Through the intersection with Southwest Hensley Road with a south arrow at Historic Columbia River Highway. At Southwest twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, two fifty-seventh Drive becomes northeast two fifty-seventh. And as Southwest twenty-eighth becomes southeast, southeast versus northeast two fifty-seventh. According to cross-street names, cross-street signs anyway. The Southeast Stark Street, it simply says two fifty-seventh Drive with a north arrow. The SAF report refers to Kane Drive as part of the corridor, but that's under Gresham's jurisdiction. The SAF report calls for changing the name to two fifty-seventh Avenue for the entire length of the road. From east-west, Northwest Graham Road all the way to Southeast Stark Street, which would require updating all the cross-street signs between those two endpoints. The only existing two fifty-seventh Avenue signs I'm aware of are on the South Frontage Road and by the Dairy Queen. According to Google Maps, the North-South street behind the Outlet Mall is named Northwest two fifty-seventh Avenue. While the road into and around the Outlet Mall is Northwest two fifty-seventh Way. The SAF report cover page doesn't call for a public hearing, but finding number nine reads, quote, "City Council has carefully considered testimony at public hearings and has determined that it is in best interest of the city's residents. Rename the city segment between Southeast Stark Street and the east-west segment of Northwest Graham Road to two fifty-seventh Avenue." There are also inaccuracies in findings number one and two, which should read Northwest North Frontage Road, since the endpoint is the Frontage Road on the north side of I eighty-four. Also, finding number three mistakenly states the current signage on Northwest Frontage Road reads Northwest two fifty-seventh Drive. They read two fifty-seventh Avenue, as does the street sign by the Dairy Queen. They read 257th Avenue, as does the street sign by the Dairy Queen. An additional incongruity I discovered is that on the county voter rolls, all the residences along what Troutdale labels Southwest 257th Drive have mailing addresses of Southwest 257th Avenue. In summary, it appears the change will require replacing all the street signs from east-west Northwest Graham Road to Southeast Stark Street. Now, for the, so you went right in, so you can follow along a little easier for the next time around. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Just under five minutes. All right. Any other comments or from the public? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment. Counselor Ripma?
Just clarification, this is a county road. And part of it is a state road. Do they change the signs for us? Once, I mean, they want to do this. In your SAF report, it's obvious they want to do it. Will they be changing the signs? Or do we have to? Who pays for them?
That, that's part of the pre-coordination that I talked about. We've worked out a division of labor on that. So the city would change the, the city, the, basically, the cross-street signs were the city streets that intersect into 257th. So those are the small signs. Uh, the county would be changing the, uh, the big mast arm signs at the, at the larger intersections on the county road, and then the state would, uh, change some, they have a couple smaller signs, I think, that Paul may have alluded to, that, that they, that they would change. And that, that was part of the discussions we had with them prior to, uh, really pursuing this, you know, further and bringing it to the council.
Okay, sounds good.
Uh, Mr. Ray Young?
Just add, this is another reason of the many why we're asking to have this name changed. If there's so many inconsistencies, it's unbelievable, unbelievable. I was looking on, going down the hill on 257th. Dryville Parish Apartments on 257th is a avenue. Across the street, Hampton Heights Apartments are a drive, at 257th Drive. That's the county assessor. He's using two different places, possibly, same area, so if you're going to be everywhere the same.
Right, and I'll add that one of Paul's comments spoke a bit to your concerns about, uh, the, uh, addressing, in that, again, many of the, uh, folks along that road that are on 257th Drive already have effectively an address of 257th Avenue in practical terms.
Okay. There's no other comments or concerns from council? Uh, I believe we have a direction. Thank you, Mr. Bernicker, appreciate it. All right, moving on to agenda item number nine, Staff Communications.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, a couple of things. First of all, you all should have gotten an email a couple weeks ago from Chris Danson. Remember him, taller guy, ginger, used to work here? And he invited you all to a Portland Economic Summit on June 29th. Uh, he would like you to RSVP if you can come and join them. It's going to be over in the Rockwood area, I believe. And if you did not get that email or lost it, let me know, we'll forward it to you again if you want to redo it. Number two, just a quick report on First Friday and the Arts Festival weekend. Of course, we haven't done any official scientific studies, but in checking with the sheriff's office, and checking with staff, and checking with people who attended it over the weekend, and people who work downtown, there was really no significant problems all weekend long, in terms of problems, in terms of complaints, in terms of any issues. It was, interestingly, very nice. And one of the new tools that we have, I hate to say it, the Big Brother's involved, uh, we have a service that we're able to track how many different cell phones come in a different geographical area, not identifying the people, of course. But on Friday evening, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, we had 2,100 different people in downtown Troutdale. Not including children, of course, at least if they have cell phones.
Well, I was gonna say, it's a different age.
On Saturday, between 11:00 AM and 7:00 PM, there were 2,300 separate visitors in downtown Troutdale. And on Sunday, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, there was 1,800 separate visitors in downtown Troutdale. So, uh, just on these numbers, now, the longer we have the service, the more we can check historically, but those, all three numbers seem very good in terms of we had a good turnout for those nights. So, preliminary, the short report on how the weekend went, very well. Um, number three, as I mentioned earlier, uh, the dog park near Columbia Park is, you should be seeing some activity. So if any constituents ask what's going on in the woods there, they are right now clearing it and starting to put the surrounding fence in uh, for the dog park, which will be developed over the next couple months. The fence delineation of the outsides of it is the first step. Um, number four, don't forget, next Tuesday evening, we have an extra meeting, the URA meeting, which approves their budget and gets an update on it. It should not be a long meeting, but we do have a URA meeting next Tuesday night. And finally, Ed pointed out to me, and I provided this information to Mr. Wilcox, on the consent agenda, yes, it says resolutions shall be by a roll-call vote, but Ordinance 2.08110 specifically says that ordinances and resolutions can be on the consent agenda. Seemingly a little conflict, but we solve it by doing a roll-call vote whenever we have a consent agenda. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Council Communications, Counselor Glance?
Uh, not much. There's been a lot of, some of the other groups that I work on, a lot of wildfire preparation going on in terms of assessing risks, giving out messaging, um, doing a lot of stuff like that. And as I mentioned earlier, I listened in on the Gresham Council work session, where I want to say it was, I don't know, five, six million dollar deficit. They are looking to bring another bond issue back again. And, because it was relatively close, so I kind of hope that'll pass, but they definitely called out the three cities is not paying their fair share.
That is accurate. Uh, Council President Ripma?
I, um, want to thank the mayor and council, and, and many others for condolences and kindness to me. This is a tough time, uh, and, uh, your thoughts and prayers are appreciated. That's all.
Thank you, Dave. Counselor Caswell?
Nothing for me tonight.
Counselor what?
You guys are all nothing.
Nothing? Uh, Counselor White?
Yeah, I did, I did talk to Chin Chisholm about the art festival, and she said it exceeded their predictions, and she also wrote down a lot of notes and things that she could have done better. And, um, and most of the business were just jam-packed, so. And, and I think it was a like race, had a lot of new faces that experienced Troutdale, and hopefully they'll be back, so. I think it was a good investment in Troutdale.
I think so too. Counselor Whitaker?
Nothing to see there.
I have a friend that lives downtown in one of the townhouses, and he said it was fantastic. Said it was, he had no problems, nothing to complain about other, not other than, uh, nothing to complain about, but just good things to say about the whole program and the whole event and the whole weekend, so. He loved it. Um, I had a lot of family and friends down there, and they all loved it, and met a couple people from out of, out of state that came, visiting family, and a couple people that just moved within the last month to Troutdale. And that was one of the things that brought them to our city specifically from out of state, was the fact that we have that good small-town feel. And events like what we had the other weekend just kind of solidified that, in their opinion, not mine, in theirs, so. Good words from people around the community, so thank you to staff and everybody that helped. All right, other than that.
I'd like to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded by everybody, all in favor, signify by seconded. All opposed? All right, have a good evening, everybody. Thank you very much. It's dinner time, ladies and gentlemen.